Yes, you're live.
Okay, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order and keep you with a national character philosophy of Boone Community School Board promotes and models principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a manner consistent with these principles. Mr. Lewis, could we have roll call?
Mr. Lewis?
Weber?
Here.
Nyström?
Here.
Teben?
Here.
Pritchard?
Here.
Milhouse?
Here. Okay, recognition of visitors. I don't have anything on that this section of the agenda. Someone needs to turn off their... Okay. Thank you whoever wasn't muted, so. Uh, let's move on. Dr. Menard, anything on recognition of visitors that's not on here?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, consideration of agenda, Dr. Menard, Mr. Lewis, are there any changes, additions to the agenda?
I have no changes or additions.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed? Move to approve agenda as printed? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pritchard, secondary by Mrs. Teben, to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Next, hearing from delegations. Uh, Bog, is there anyone on here that wants to talk that you're aware of? Nope. Um. Mr. Lewis, so you can watch the
I have nothing.
chat box, do you have nothing either? Sounds good to me. Dan, we're gonna move on to the routine business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the routine business. Move to approve routine business as printed? Okay, it's been moved, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pritchard, secondary by Dr. Nyström, to approve the routine consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion or anything that any board member would like to pull out or has any questions for Dr. Menard at this time?
Yeah, I, I sent an email last week and I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what was just going on, my phone was acting funny on me, so. Yeah, I'll just kind of throw this out here now. Um, I want to make sure at some point we discuss the email that we received as a board last week. I want to make sure that we're discussing equity training and for our teachers and our associates and all of our staff. And I want to make sure that we're doing some sort of inclusivity teachings in the classrooms, and I know a lot of that is like throwing a lot at our admins tonight. So maybe just a future board item, I really want to make sure that that's part of it, I'd like a report of what equity training has been done, what is going to be done, and same with inclusive, inclusivity.
Okay, I think what I'm gonna do right now is, um, we're gonna add that to next month's agenda. And so the administration give us some time to get a report back because that really does not fall into the consent agenda. And it's really a little bit late to add that to the regular agenda, so without principals having time in the administration, so. I would ask the administration to put that on the agenda for our next meeting, which would be July any of the day.
July 8.
July 8?
No.
No, no, no. It'd be
13th, sorry.
13th, okay, that sounds right. July 13th. So. I think it's good topics, Joey, but we just need to have that in the proper time and then have the administration have time to discuss this air issue fully.
I, I completely agree, and that's why I'm saying what I'm saying, just like, I know that takes time to think through a process and and as a board member, I'm willing to do what I can to come along side and discuss those things as well too, so. Yeah, just want to throw that out there and we can move on then.
Okay, um, any others?
Yeah, Dr. Milhouse?
Yeah.
Reading the return to learn plan, that it's touched on, those, those things are touched on in that plan.
Are they? Okay, well, we can just
Yeah.
We can discuss some of them when we get to the return, when we get to the return to learning, so. Let's finish off the consent agenda first, and then we'll bring this back up when we're talking about the return to learning. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The motion passes unanimously. Next is the return to learn plan. Dr. Menard, I'm gonna let you start with this one, pretty complex issue.
Yeah, it is, um, we've done a good we've done a good job of kind of coordinating how to get the plan done and and I think it's coming together nicely, at least at this point, there's a lot of work yet to be done. We had continuous learning consultation meetings the last two weeks of May in the areas that we're working on, the return to learn plan. And that includes infrastructure, health and safety, Iowa academic standards, social emotional behavior and health, equity and special education. And all of those groups gave us lots of good ideas, lots of good direction and the types of things that need to go into the plan. We've put some on this plan, this plan is not due to the Department of Education until June 30th, so there's a lot of work to be done on it yet, what you're seeing now is, is not even the completed draft, but the, the work of the continuous learning consulting committees that they have given us, and then a few people have been able to work on the, on the guidelines and putting those together. But we're gonna have to have another meeting later in June to approve the plan so that we can submit it to the Department of Education by June 30th. The plan that you're seeing now is onsite and offsite education, or essentially what we've been doing for the last couple of months and what we did prior to that in our traditional learning environment. The other aspect of this plan that will be developed after July 1 is the hybrid draft plan, and that's going to include how we respond if we can only have so many kids in the building at a time, or so many children in a classroom. Or if we have large groups of students who because of health reasons or health concerns are unable to attend school or staff for that matter, that may have those issues. That takes on a little, a little broader perspective and one that we, right now, have no idea what it's going to look like in August. So we're hoping there's, everybody around the country is working on these types of plans, we're hoping to get some good ideas and good support in, in how to put that part of the plan together in July, so that's done for the start of school in August. So our timeline is, we completed the continuous learning consultation meetings on, by the end of May. This is the draft report coming to the board. After this, we need to take it to a lead learning team, and that's about 25 variety of staff members. We hope to do that by June 15th. We hope to have the onsite and offsite plan for return to learn finalized by June 17th to get it to the board and hopefully have a board meeting, short one to review the return to learn plan either June 22nd, or if that's not possible, June 29th. Because we will have to submit this plan to the Department of Education on June 30th. And then we move into July and work through July on the hybrid plan and get that approved at the August 10th board meeting. I will tell you too, that as this is developing, each week, the Department of Education has webinars to help guide us in this process, and as with us, with them, things seem to change weekly. And so that, as they learn more, they're giving us more, giving us additional guidance, and I know that there will, as we look at those things between now and the end of June, there'll be some areas we'll have to add to this plan. But we'll be working on it throughout the month. Excuse me. And hopefully be able to get it approved by June 22nd, so we can forward it to the Department of Education. There's a lot of stuff on the plan, so I guess I'd ask if there are questions or thoughts as you've had a chance to look at it over the last few days.
Open for discussion.
Well, Brad, there are a lot of places where it says that you're going to follow the CDC or the state guidelines. And I, I know that that facilitates getting that plan done, but do you have to delineate those before it goes in?
No, what will go to the state is actually, we'll just, we'll probably link this plan so they have it. But in reality, as all the state is going to do, the Department of Education is look at several assurances that we have set are in the plan. So things like the CDC requirements will not have to be submitted to the Department of that.
The problem there is the other problem there is some of the CDC recommendations change, so we don't want to get too specific, because if we do, they're gonna change, then we gotta change. I think just saying CDC guidance is probably gonna be better in those regards. It's a moving target.
And I will tell you, Pam, just to clarify that a little bit more, you know, we had to have a continuous learning plan together back the end of March when school closed, and we had to put it together fairly quickly. The, to submit that to the Department of Education, we submitted a one-page summary. And we checked off on several assurances that we did have in the plan. And it took me about two minutes to fill it out, and I got it back in about 10 minutes as approved. So they're really more concerned about the assurances, leaving the specifics to the local district.
Yeah. You know, I, I guess I had a personal concern today about what we were following. My granddaughter and her driving partner sent me a picture, they had their first day of driver's ed today. And they both had their masks on, and it was real cute, and then when she got done, they said, well, did your teacher wear a mask too? Well, being 14, she really didn't know, and she dragged her feet, and that told me, no, probably not. So I think in that case, maybe we need to clarify stuff like that to our staff. If that's in the CDC guidelines, or if that's in the state guidelines right now, go for it. Cause I got my chart out, and all it says about driver's ed is virtually. So, you know, that was confusing to me, it might be confusing to other people.
And unfortunately, we do not, that's a separate company that does the driver education component. Some of them are, are teachers, full-time teachers that are doing it on the side for extra pay. And some of the other teachers are not teachers, I know retired law enforcement officer that is an instructor too, so.
I wasn't sure who taught that company, okay.
The virtual part is the state approved the classroom part to be virtual, so right now all of the classrooms across the state are doing virtual, or they usually do those in person. I'm seeing, you know, most of, as it is a private company, but as I've seen, I don't know if it's mandatory or optional, but up at the school, I'm seeing all the driver's ed teachers coming in. Most of the time, I've seen them all wearing masks, most of the time, so.
I would hope that they would, because that's a pretty close Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't seen any not up to this point, but.
Dr. Menard, I was just gonna add, we were, we were pretty specific in our wording, and, and I had the infrastructure part along with Drake Bailey, and we put in that we would follow the CDC requirements rather than the recommendations, because we felt like as a district, we would have to decide on recommendations which we would follow, and, but requirements are a different story, so that if there were requirements that came out, we would be, we would have to follow those. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I, I know, I mean, I don't know if it's, it's not a requirement by the CDC, I don't believe, to wear masks, so if we're saying that as a district, then I, I don't know if we are or if we aren't, but we were specific in our wording in what we put in there.
So Scott, back to driver's ed, is that called drive tech?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, one of the other things that I would add, being a driver's ed teacher, is that you know, one of the things, and you know, I did it for, I don't know, 12, 13 years, but it's hard with a mask, one of the things I do as an instructor when you're driving is you're watching for the facial cues of the kids and what they're looking at, and what their expressions are to see if they're paying attention, and so there's also a little, I'd almost say there's a little danger in that, having people have masks on in some of those situations as you're walk, as you're watching for some pretty, you know, tight places, but like I said, up to this point, I have seen most of them wearing masks.
Okay.
I think one other suggestion I would have for the driver's ed instructors would be to keep the windows rolled down as much as possible. I know it might be a little bit warm, but if you got the windows rolled down, you're gonna get that air circulating fast enough that it's not gonna be nearly as big of a problem. Especially when they're driving in town, out in the country, it's a little bit tougher because of the speed, but they're driving 25, 35 miles an hour around town. Uh, windows down would be good.
The bus trip guidelines.
Exactly, yeah, that's on the school bus guideline, so it'd be a good one to add for the school.
I'll mention that to them tomorrow.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep.
Other comments, discussion, Mrs. Teben, Mr. Pritchard, Mr. Weber?
Just one thing quick on Joey's point that he made earlier, I'd really like to see that topic as a a full work session, so we could bring some teachers in to gain their perspective on what they're seeing specifically in their classrooms and what things might help them in, in accomplish some, some of those goals.
Perhaps what we can do is on the 22nd or on the 29th, have both a work session and then a regular session so that we can have the vote to approve this, but before that, perhaps have your work sessions, so we can have a long discussion about the issues that Mr. Weber brought up, which are very important. That'll give everyone some time to think, talk to others, maybe we can invite a few other teachers, ideally if things calm down enough, I would kind of like to see that be more of a meeting in the commons where we can spread out, social distance as much as we can, board members or citizens who don't feel safe with the social distancing, we'd allow them to, they could come in and via Skype or via the Zoom conference here. I think, um, hopefully, the governor's gonna be making some recommendations here, I think June 15th, June 17th. Be next week, and hopefully with that, we can open that up and at least have that in the commons area for more open discussion, be able to get more teachers input, maybe a couple of students input too.
The only other thing I would add is, I read through this, but I read through it rather rapidly, so I'd like you know, the next week or so to look at it a little deeper, and then if I did have a question, just email Brad about that, if that's all right.
I was, I was gonna suggest that Dr. Menard could keep Mrs. Teben and Dr. Nyström informed with updates every three or four days' time, since they're our education committee. So they can stay on top of this subject as it's evolving. Just so we don't have, it'll make it a little bit easier for the board to have had those two people inputting from earlier on now until the next two or three weeks from now, I think it'd eliminate a lot of questions.
That would help and give me just more, more of a chance to review, and then as updates come through, that would help too.
Yep, Dr. Nyström, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that sounds good, because it is a huge undertaking. You know, it takes time, it just takes time.
It, it does take time, so thank you for the report, Dr. Menard, yeah.
I'd also suggest if we do something on the 22nd or 29th, it'd be kind of an open discussion of ideas. Because the administrators have a lot going on between now and then with the return to learn plan, I doubt if we'll get very far in developing an equity plan outside of the one on the return to learn, but
That's fine.
But I think an open discussion of what people are looking for and the types of things they'd like to see us do would certainly be helpful.
That's fine, that's fine, I don't think we have to have anything in writing right now, we've got an entire summer to get all that part into writing, so, but just have some discussion topics.
I have a question for Jill. Jill, are you the equity coordinator? Is that when he agrees as Yeah, because, because we have some things in place, as I recall, yeah. Thank you.
And go ahead, Joey.
I would, I would like to know what's already being done, what has already been done, if that's possible, I mean, just because those are questions that are just coming at us right now, and so it would be nice as board members when people are sending us emails or stopping us on the street, just asking like, what does Boone do? It would be really helpful for us to say, hey, well, these are some things that have been done in the past. And we're gonna be meeting to talk about what else can be done in the future, so just, yeah.
It's been an ongoing conversation all the way through, so.
One of the questions whenever we went out on a school visitation was, do you know who your equity coordinator is? So I think it's very, very important that we continue to publicize that, that Jill is our equity coordinator, so if anybody does have any questions or something that they know who to contact, so if that can be in the next torador times or, or, you know, sent out, so just as a reminder for everybody, many people may know already, but I always know when we ask students or when we ask parents, a lot of times, they didn't know that when we were on school visitation, so. Publicizing that again, I think would be very good.
Okay, my next question is between the 22nd and 29th, those two dates, does anyone have a conflict with one date or the other, that they could not be either on the meeting via Zoom or in person? I'll ask the board members first.
My social life is pretty nil right now, so I'm, I'm free both those days.
Okay. Dr. Nyström?
Either or.
Mr. Pritchard?
No, either one works for me.
Okay, Mr. Weber?
Sorry, I was
Joey?
Yeah, sorry, I was looking at my calendar and trying to pick this back up. Um. Yeah, I would also agree, either one looked good for me, so.
Is there any administrators that that would not work for, I'm thinking about vacations, that they would not be available that night, even by Skype or by Zoom for an hour or two? Um, Brett, any problems with you?
We, we have games on those nights.
Okay, okay, understandable.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mr. Byam?
I'm looking at a trip to Michigan to visit my dad on the 22nd, so the 29th works actually better for me.
Okay, Mr. Winter, you're next. Neither one for you, or either one? And let's see here, Mr. Kelly?
I'm open, unless I'm a bouncer at one of the games.
Okay, well, Mrs. James?
Either one's fine, either is fine, the 29th gives us more time for return to learn, so that sounds good.
Mrs. Sellar?
Sellar, yeah, the 29th or the Monday before work just great.
Okay, Bob?
I'm good whenever.
Okay, Jamie? Okay, so I say we do it, I'm gonna recommend the 29th, since we had no conflicts there, we had one conflict on the 22nd. And as Autumn said, it'll give everyone another week to work on the return to learn. So.
Brian, could I just point out too, the, the question about Jill being the equity coordinator? That is at the bottom of the, in the footer of every torador times every week, so it is communicated out. It's also on the webpage and other locations, so we have been communicating that out. Won't read the footer, so maybe they, they don't realize it's there, but we have been putting it out there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's probably, probably because it's a footer that we don't see it, you know, that not everybody knows, those footers are, most people don't read the footers. So yeah, if we could maybe just put, put an article or, you know, big statement someplace else, it would be good.
Maybe an article and say the board's gonna look into this on this, this date, and that who our current equity officer is and her contact information in that article would be good. Okay, anything else, Dr. Menard, anyone else on this topic? Okay. Um, I believe that ends topic 3.02, special meeting. June 29th, 6:30 PM. Uh, baseball and softball update, Mr. Collins?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to say that our coaches and our, and our student athletes have done a real good job of accepting some of the guidelines and the procedures that we have before and after practice, I just think they're all thrilled that we're able to have a, a season, so they're willing to do whatever they need to do. When it comes down to wiping down equipment, sanitizing hands, social distancing the best that we can, you know. They're still catching themselves when they, you know, go in the dugout or accidentally get too close to each other, but really, things are going very well, coaches are very pleased, the next, the next step and the next hurdle is to see how we can include spectators, and hopefully they will be as willing to accept those changes as, as our student athletes and coaches have been. We've had parent meetings at every level with our baseball and softball parents. We've gone through the guidelines lines with our students, student athletes, the first day of practice. And we've also sent a message out listing the expectations and asking for our parents' leadership when they come to our games, so that if they're following through on those guidelines, hopefully grandparents and community members will as well. And visiting teams, I think it's really helped that we've had shared conference guidelines that we've also gone through and shared with our, with our parents, so everybody's kind of on the same page when we play in conference.
I would ask you to possibly remind the students that if they are getting together outside of practice that they still follow some of those guidelines, I saw several of the baseball players in McColl's Park at one of the fields, they are practicing, they were playing, but they were not using social distance in any way, shape, or form, so. Just as a reminder, it doesn't hurt, I mean, I know they're, they're anxious and they want to be out there and do, they're doing extra practices, is what I'm saying. And maybe this was be, when I saw it was before practice started, I don't know, but they were not doing any social distancing, so.
All right.
I don't mean to be a bell-tail, but
No, that's fine, we can, we can remind them of those things outside of practice too. When they're not being supervised, it's gonna be important, and we also stress that if they're showing any symptoms or not feeling well, that that could really be a detriment to their team, and that they really need to stay home. Especially this summer, if they're not feeling up to snuff, so to speak, and you know, we have regulations with, where they report their attendance as well as their temperature each day before practice, and so that's at least documented.
And I think we also have a question about form every day, if they have, if they have, have anyone in their household that has been sick and diagnosed with COVID too, I believe that's on
Yeah.
here someplace. Because that should be very important, yeah, it's in the blue, it's on the yellow, um, the attachment number two here, the three attachments. The attention one, it's down there, about three quarters way down, which is good, we just need to encourage the kids, it's for the best for their team, and all their teammates that they follow these rules. The only other thing I would suggest, Mr. Collins, is our public address announcers, make sure they're making frequent announcements.
Yes.
Like every, every other inning to encourage people.
Yes, we've received the High School Athletic Association, actually just yesterday, released a, or no, it was this morning as a matter of fact. A, a list of items that the PA announcer is to announce every other inning, so we have those announcements and it's consistent with all. we have those announcements and it's consistent with all all schools. So Eric, our PA announcer, has been made aware of those as well as, you know, Scott and I over at Creisman Field. Uh, we'll make sure we announce that. We also had some signs made um that are placed around both Creisman Field and Memorial Park um that have those guidelines on it, you know, right outside before people come in uh to check themselves as well as inside the fields. Um, not only for our players, for practice protocols, but also spectators.
Great, okay, sounds good. Uh, the other thing we is the transportation, um guidelines and procedures. Um. Uh, Mr. Collins, you wanna go over those? Do you have any comments?
Uh, nothing big. Um, would you like me to share my screen to show or is that necessary?
Uh, board members, do you need that? Are you okay? No, we don't need the screen shared.
Okay, um, I think that's an important piece for us, um for our summer to be able to participate in our schedule. When the initial guidance came out, if you don't read close enough, it restricts to thirteen on a bus, and that's just not logistically possible um with our for our ninth grade schedule or our JV varsity schedule. So um we put in uh some further uh protocols to help provide um or to help make sure that we can fit more more like twenty five on a bus. Um, and that is, you know, each each passenger is wearing a mask. Um, you know, masks are encouraged at games, but we are not requiring them as a conference, but in a bus in close proximity, that's that's pretty important. It also talks about uh uh seating, um specific seating as far as one row was against the the uh window while the next row is um closer to the aisle, um one person per row. And uh leaving a seat behind the bus driver. Making sure that we're checking temperatures before they get on the bus, limiting space. Um, those sort of things, wiping down the bus at the end of the night. Um, it just kind of goes through those protocols and it's very similar to what other schools have done in order to be able to have especially lower level seas, level, lower level seasons. We're promoting or requesting also to have each family fill out an additional release or waiver uh for transportation, just given the circumstances. And there's a um, I believe it's attached, but uh um a waiver that um SAI and Mac Carver um passed out to schools that is pretty specific on what's supposed to happen with regard to bus transportation. We also need to pay attention to the bus driver and their safety and health as well, um which I think those guidelines um pertain to that also. Does anybody have any questions on those or on that proposal?
I will say that I have already reviewed this. Uh, I got called as the um chairman of the Board of Health. In that capacity, uh Mr. Collins and um Mike Kennedy talked to me.
Yeah.
Uh, to make sure that all the rules and regulations were being filed. And if you look at that thirteen passenger per bus, it it says something about this is ideal, but understand this might not be practical. And so this is the um compromise that uh other school districts going to, so I felt it was safe from a public health standpoint.
Yeah, and and Mike and I have discussed it and gone through it as well. And um he feels from his point of view that this is all doable also. Um, the things that we have in this proposal. And if the, you know, if we decide as a district that, you know, that looks good and we're okay to do that, um we will make sure that we have each family fill out one of those waivers starting tomorrow when we send them home at practice. Make sure that we have um masks for everybody as well.
Hey Brett, um, do you guys need any assistance at the home games? Like, you know, Scott made the joke about um being a bouncer. Um, do you need assistance from any of the rest of us helping to just?
You know, I I really think we're gonna, I appreciate that, Joey. I think we're gonna be okay. I've been pretty firm with our families and saying that we really need them. Um, you know, we've encouraged them to bring their own chairs, their lawn chairs. We've made sure that we've had space in the outfield and not put up all the signs and the wind screens and everything so people can spread out. And we've warned them that there'll only be limited seating. Um, it's really hard to be the social distancing police, so we've kind of put that across. Um, you know, families need to be social distanced. There'll be limited seating on the bleachers. Um, I I really think that our our families will do a good job and um, you know, if we have other families that fill in. I I think it helps that every other school is facing the same um, facing the same barriers too. Um, it's just, it 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 helps if anybody's at a game just to be mindful and help reminding everybody and encouraging, because it's not gonna be a perfect scenario, but um we've got some things, you know, that I reached out to parents, like don't grab foul balls. We have a system of players going to get that, because if somebody else outside the field touches it, then we have to sanitize it. Um, just things like that, you know, and that stuff's gonna be posted around the park too, so we can reference that as well. But I appreciate that. Yeah, anytime you're around, just kind of be looking for those things.
Okay, um, I believe we probably need a motion, even though technically Pat and I could approve this, um for the transportation guidelines and procedures. Could I have a motion to approve that?
This is Pat. I move to approve the transportation guidelines and procedures.
Okay, is there a second?
Right here.
Yeah, it's been moved by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Weber to approve the um transportation guidelines and procedures for summer athletics. Any further discussion? During all those, oh, Jeremy? Uh Brett, one time that I appreciate your hard work, Brett. I know it's been difficult and you're salvaging a season for some kids and a lot of people appreciate what you're doing.
Uh, thanks, Jeremy. I mean, it's, it's really, it could have been a lot worse if we didn't have people willing to be flexible and 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 plan and and being helpful through the process. You know, we're lucky to have some really good coaches um that are willing to do this for our kids. I know they're excited about it and being ready to play, so thanks for that.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Call his name. Motion passes unanimously and uh Mr. Collins, on behalf of the board and on behalf of the students and the parents of the district would like to thank you for all your hard work you've done in getting this season rescheduled, rescheduled. And hopefully we don't have to put another reschedule in there.
Yeah, I know. Thank you all. And we'll make sure we get that information out to our families first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is the standard based grading. Uh, Mr. Byam and Mrs. James, you're up.
Uh, we uh, over the last couple of weeks, um obviously since we um started going to the continuous learning plan, um, we continue to um work through the process of our grading practices, uh especially doing things a little bit differently than what we've had to do in the past. And so we've had to adjust that, um, adjust those grading practices. Um, Bob, can I share my screen?
Yes.
Jill, are you good? It's not letting me, Bob.
It's, it's set to let anyone share their screen.
Oh, there we go. Got it. Very good. All right. So um Jill and I kind of wanted, uh, we wanted to explain kind of what we've been doing. Um, the process that now we're not getting anything. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
For some reason, it keeps kicking me out of there, so I'll just go slide by slide this way. Can you at least see that part?
Yes.
Okay. So um, one thing uh for the rest of the board um that didn't know, uh, we've met with the academic committee from the um board. Uh, we've kind of gone through our plan. Uh, we've also had discussions with our teachers in this process. Um, and we feel that one of the things that has been a pretty large conflict for us in the transition from uh traditional school to um online school is our is our grading practices. And so one of the things that we started working on, obviously with um the return to learn plan is how can we better uh do our grading practices if we were onsite, offsite, or in a hybrid model? And so we've started to kind of work that way, have a discussion with um our teachers, uh our students, um obviously the board and through the administration uh to try to figure out exactly what would be the best way um to be able to support our students' learning. Um. So a couple of things, uh during uh during the closure itself, um we had to move all of our classes to a pass and complete. Um, teachers were identified the remaining essential standards um that uh that they had for the remainder of the semester. And we gave passing grades determined based on the evidence of standard mastery. So we went away from um, you know, the, some of the completion pieces, um just uh and and really kind of upped our game to show evidence of mastery of the content, which is something that we've been working on and talking about for um for many years and something that we've been wanting to do. So um, some of the things that we're looking at for the twenty twenty one school year is we need to be able to have consistent grading and feedback for our students. And then obviously a clarity for our students and families on mastery and success criteria, because.
I'm gonna jump in. Sorry, it's hard because I can't see your face and see your presentation, but uh that was something that was um when Autumn and I were facilitating the academic standards um subcommittee for return to learn, that came up. We kind of broke people into subgroups of three or four, and that really came out. In several of the groups that um to get better at continuous learning, we needed to be better at being able to give um more consistent grading and feedback and and different, different levels talked about what pieces they had. If we have rubrics, those rubrics should be shared with the families and with the students. So if you're learning at home, you have a clearer picture of what mastery and success really looks like. Um, if we have proficiency scales, those things are very helpful and just being much, much better at at um being able to identify and communicate to our students and families uh what what it means to um, you know, show and demonstrate that you've learned what you need to in the course and less about, did I complete this assignment or not? Um, because it was hard for parents to know and students to know if if what they completed and did was good enough. Um, and so we proficiency scales, uh rubrics, uh standard space type learning kept coming up in that academics um standards return to learn committee, which is why we bring it to you now.
One other thing that we started uh looking at is what the research is showing, especially when it comes to college admissions, because that's been one of the biggest topics and questions when it comes to standard based grading. Um, we have a kind of an expert in Jill and Dr. James that um her husband actually works at Iowa State and kind of knows the ins and outs. And there's been a lot of discussion amongst the state and actually around the nation um when it comes to standard uh standard reference grading or standard based grading. Uh, Jill, did you want to talk about this one a little bit?
Sure, um, you know, there there are studies out there. I think that uh Chris has worked with several of his teachers to identify, you know, what what does the research say about standards based grading, but um several of the things that he's highlighted here on the slides are things that have come up in my, and our discussions at home and the things that I know that um, the team with the region universities and the Department of Education um have been working on um to just kind of determine what universally should a transcript look like and what does it mean um when uh, you know, for a student to demonstrate that they're going to be successful at that next level. And um, you know, grade inflation, inaccurate portrayals of student performance, all of those things are um, make it difficult when you're looking at an A, a B, or a a grade point average to really know what it is that um a student knows um and and can demonstrate to be successful at that next level versus um that standards based learning that maybe separates some of those behaviors, talks about a level of mastery and better defines if a student is really prepared for that, whatever comes next.
And when you're looking at uh at learning and learning the content within the essential standards, um, one of the things that studies have shown is that there's an increased remediation with it uh within colleges because um grading practices vary so much. So for instance, in our, in our school a few years back, um, we had forty-four different grading policies for forty-four different teachers. Um, and so that's one of the things that we've worked extremely hard at trying to get a consensus in what the learning looks like, rather than having all kinds of different policies that are very hard um to follow. A couple of uh interesting uh quotes. Uh, one, every, every student succeeds act. One of those pieces is recognizing proficiency based learning invites new innovative accountability systems based on proficiency based learning. That's coming from the New England Board of Higher Education, and they were doing a study um with a lot of Ivy League schools on that they feel that uh the Every Student Succeeds Act is um really starting to focus and recognize uh standard reference grading in a way to um look at the innovative practices and accountability for our students. And so obviously, one of those factors, uh if you start looking at schools within the top ten within the state, you know, you're looking at Ames, you're looking at uh Gilbert and other schools that have already started to make this transition or have made that transition. Another interesting uh topic in terms of uh kind of raising the bar, ultimately leaders in both K twelve and higher education have responsibility for leading their respective organizations in ways that advance the preparation of college and career ready learners. In spite of entrenched attitudes and other barriers, improvements in grading systems that more accurately communicate student achievement are needed and K twelve leaders should not wait for those higher education and waiting in higher education to change. And I think right now, I think that this is our opportunity to go there. Um, especially with our struggle with our grading practices. You know, with online learning, uh it definitely needs to take a a a different approach towards our grading practices. Jill, anything for you? Okay, you wanna hit this?
Oh, yes, I'll do this one. Um, so part of that discussion with that return to learn com- um committee, the high school team and other administrators was, you know, what's the work that we have been, have done in school improvement over the last several years? Um, you know, are are we prepared to make a shift in or, you know, where where are we in that process? And there's a lot of foundational work that goes into standards based grading that really is a part of that PLC process that we've spoken with the board um about over the last several years and that emphasis that um we really put on district improvement and and PLCs beginning in that seventeen eighteen school year. So you can just kind of see a timeline here um of that PLC and professional learning community implementation process and our and our teachers really beginning to identify what was essential in their classes and grade levels, break those into clear and measurable learning targets, um start to work on common assessments and then continuing that work uh in the, in those professional learning communities and start to uh this past school year, really that emphasis was on balanced assessment systems and and um better assessments as well as what's a mastery scale look like? What's it mean to, you know, dig into our rubrics and look at them a little bit closer around um what are different levels of mastery that a student might have for each standard? And those things go right along with a standards based learning approach. So throughout um the same process a- a- as we've been implementing professional learning communities, we've been talking a lot in all of our teams and with our um building teams about standards based learning and really making sure that the feedback that we provide to to kids and and to families is about the learning and you know, where they stand in that level of of their understandings. And um that provides a better roadmap for our students about, you know, where they are and where they need to come next uh or or go next. And um, you know, there are some things on the implementing standards based learning kind of timeline. Um, this was developed last uh spring as kind of a, well, let's look at what these two pieces look like when they run parallel. And there are some things that just didn't happen in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, you know, we all know that the last couple of months have been a bit unique, but um for the most part, to be able to um, you know, make a shift in, a larger shift in some of those grading prac- practices, um we're right on target with having those foundational pieces put in place. That where where the teachers are ready, the teachers, um, and we have some more data here that we'll show you after this, but um we've done a lot of work over the last three plus years that set the stage for that next step, which is then um changing the ways that we communicate with our students and families.
So this is um kind of unpacking that. These are the key components for a success, uh successful implementation. And I think that's one of the things that makes us feel comfortable in the possibility of moving. Um, each one of these, uh, this actually comes from the AEA um and guidelines and pieces that they've put together um that help kind of unpack standard reference grading and um some of the components. and some of the components that need to you need to prepare for. And you'll notice by the check marks, these are pieces that we've worked on. Obviously, this year, we worked on the bal- balance assessment piece. We can still do some accommodation and modification pieces, but we we have that kind of built into our program. And then we've really worked on our interventions with our assessments this last year. And so a couple of these actually have, this was kind of from from an older presentation, but we can check off some of those pieces that puts us in a really good place in order to do that. Obviously, we've continued our professional learning, the instructional cycle, we've we've done that with our teacher leaders. And then over the last few years, we've done a lot with our growth mindset and things like that and preparing for this transition. One of the things that we started looking at is our readiness. So all of our students have experienced at least a pilot in standard-based grading and using proficiency scales for communicating learning. So in November, we actually ran a walkthrough. Our our the administration would go in. We did a professional development where our teachers were actually, all of them had to create proficiency scale. It needed to be posted, and it needed to have an understanding of what what was going on within that within that essential standard. And so everything was posted during that time. And then Drake and I did walkthroughs of the majority of the staff to check to make sure that it was working the way it was supposed to. So students knew how to find the proficiency scales for the course. So we had it posted on the walls, we had it posted on on classroom. They understood where those were and how to find those seventy-two percent of the time. And then students knew what the proficiency scale meant in terms of learning. So a lot of fascinating conversations with the students where Drake and I would specifically ask students, can you tell me about the proficiency scale? What does that mean? What does that mean for your learning? And very detailed responses from our students, understanding the depth of the learning that we wanted. And that's one of the tricks to the, you know, tricks to the puzzle is can the students tell you what they need to learn and then how they're gonna learn it? And so those were a couple of the pieces that we worked on to try to gain an idea of where our students were when it came to readiness.
Just real quickly on that slide, explain to me the N of thirty-three. We figure we got six hundred kids in the high school, that's only about five percent response. How many people did you survey? Who did you survey?
These were classes that we went in, so we tried to go into as many teachers as we could. Some of the special education teachers did not fit into this, they were doing co-teaching pieces. And so we would go, we dropped into courses that the teachers have identified to use a proficiency skill. And so pretty much all of the teachers had a walkthrough, and we talked to the students within those classes. So the thirty-three responses or the thirty-two responses are Drake and my walkthrough of one of one of the courses. So of that the teachers identified, so it's basically one one time per teacher.
One time per teacher, so it means we're doing forty walkthroughs. That means we only got one response per classroom for each of those classrooms?
We may have talked to more than one student, but those responses were, you know, you marked a yes or a no as you went through to say, when you talk to kids in Mrs. Vanyo's class, you know, were they able to, you know, point out where the proficiency scale is and talk about what it meant? So the teacher identified which course they wanted to try to implement the professional learning in, and we gave them some time to do that. And then the administrators went through, and they would pop into those classes at different times and talk to a subset of kids, and then mark, did the kids know where it was or not? Did the kids, could they explain it or not?
This responses, it's more like it's should be thirty-three classes. And seventy-two percent of the time, the kids in that class knew, and twenty-seven percent of the time, the kids did not.
It is, it's the way that the the Google Form submits its information.
So, but saying classes, we've made much more accurate than saying students, because if you say students, well, you interview one student each one of those classes, well.
We also identified what the, we also identified what the students said. But we weren't gonna share all those responses either.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so kind of on the same notion with a reflection, Jill, did you want to talk about this one?
Sure, we have a couple of teachers who have spent the last two years kind of piloting standards-based grading or standards-reference grading in in their courses. And those teachers have worked very closely with our instructional coaches, made that kind of their professional learning goal. And so as they submit their reflections on, you know, on that professional, individual professional development goal and and again, how they're how they're doing and implementing that. This one, it was just a quote from one of those teachers this this spring, reflecting on on the implementation. And and I think it speaks well to the that teacher's observations of particularly because this particular teacher sees kids i- in core classes, I don't want to say too much, but in core classes. And so students may have her one year and then have her again the next year. And this quote just kind of shows she feels like the kids who have returned and in the second year, you know, we're we're taking another class that that use that grading and feedback method. They really knew what it was that that the standard meant. The standards were different than what they had learned the year before, but they knew how to use that information to guide their learning, to come in and use WinTime Better to think about where they were and what they might need to do next to to move forward in their learning. And then this teacher also reflected that there were a few seniors who weren't in a class that used that the next year or during their senior year. And they reflected on how they, you know, they they missed that, they appreciated that clarity in their learning. And one of those students did her proposal paper for advanced comp on why we should move forward with SRG and school-wide implementation and the benefits that she saw as a learner in that process.
So one of the things that we did before we left, after we met with the educational committee from the board, we decided we were gonna check out to make sure that our teachers felt ready. We use our kind of our own proficiency scale during the during this time and try to gather some feedback on where they where they're at. We know that within setting goals and tracking progress, that's a that's a spot that we still need to work on with our teachers, but that's something that is not a not a surprise there. You know, we we continue to work on teaching exceptional students, and that's something that we can focus in some of our professional development in for the for this year. Instruction with proficiency scales, I was I was pleasantly surprised and and happy with the responses that I think we feel that we're in a good place to move forward with this, with the extra professional development that we can put in as we start the school year to be ready to go for whether or not we're gonna be at school or online. So some of our next steps, I kind of mentioned that summer-fall professional development based on June teacher survey data. Obviously, I talked about that a little bit already, that that setting goals and tracking progress is gonna be something that we're gonna be looking at. We feel that some weekly communication with families, that this is something that we've been doing now since spring break, looking at standards, but then also working on what does the proficiency skills look like? So it can identify and help the learning process for our for our teacher, for our parents if we were to be at home again. So making sure that we're doing some weekly communication from here until the beginning of school, maybe putting a weekly update on grading on the Torrey Door time so that they know that this is something that's coming, coming down the pike. And then creating a BHS grading and implementation handbook. We've got some examples from other schools throughout the state, and we feel that that's something that we can put together reasonably quick. Any questions? I misspelled resources there.
The biggest question that I've had from educators is, is there a difference between the daily work you like to see kids complete so you can gauge how they're progressing? And then there's the project or the 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 big idea focus so they can demonstrate, you know, demonstrate their skills. That's the biggest question. If you don't get feedback from the kids pretty regularly to find out what they know and what they don't know, then the project, if you wait till the project and you wait and you wait, I think that might be the hardest thing for some instructors.
We've worked extremely hard at creating a lot of different formative assessments, and what does assessment look like in comparison to a summative assessment? And I think that's something that we continue to improve on. What does a formative assessment look like? In a lot of cases, you're creating three or four formative assessments for your one summative that you have at the end of that standard. And so we've done a lot with that. And then obviously, as we identify those essential standards and we're creating the proficiency scales, it helps us identify exactly what the learning targets are within within the system itself.
Yeah, this work goes hand in hand with that work that those professional learning communities are doing. I'm thinking of similar conversations at the high school level as well as with, say, a Franklin team as they're looking at a unit and they're thinking about, you know, what's that end goal for mastery? But then what are those checkpoints that we need along the way, those formatives that are going to give the team some data to be able to respond and be responsive? And again, I think this is just that next step of, we we've started to identify those much, much better in this last year in our unit plans and but then that next step is we need to communicate those with the kids so that the kids can see that, you know, here's the formative, and this is how it aligns with that overall standard. And, you know, am I on target to meet that standard, or is there an area that I still need to work? You know, some learning targets that I I haven't hit yet that come before that mastery piece. And so that communication with the with the kids and families is, I think, you know, what we haven't taken the step to begin to do well. Although that we just shared with you that we've piloted some things, but fully implementing in that way has not, you know, would be our next step.
I would just support that as a parent.
Teachers like to see a product that's complete, even even when it isn't really, you know, I'll use the word graded, because they just like to see progress or they like to see what they need to do next, you know? And if you never get a product, and like what happened this summer in a lot of cases, this school year, wasn't even summer. You know, how can you gauge that day-to-day progression? That's a question I think people have.
I think there's all sorts of ways to gauge that. As a career tech ed teacher, we've been doing standards-based grading since the dawn of time. So career tech ed teachers really could help the other teachers understand how to do that. And you do assess the students periodically as you go throughout the term. It's not just a one-end-end project, you do smaller projects up leading up to the bigger projects. And there's a rubric for each one of those, and they're standards based on each one of those. So I know the PD that they'll be doing, I think, will will show that. But again, I say call on some of your career tech ed teachers or whatever, because I'm sure they can help you with that. Again, we've been doing standard-based grading since the beginning of career tech ed.
And I was a CTE teacher, so I agree with you, that's basically what we did.
I was just gonna say, from a parent perspective, I think the communication with parents will be really important throughout, which is what you're talking about, because I think it could be dangerous if you wait till the end of the course to find out that your child hasn't hasn't mastered all of the information that they need to be regarding of the course, which I know you are talking about that at the at the high school, Chris. So I think maybe that's a concern that Pam was sharing, that how to communicate it out to parents. And I know for me, as a parent, I want to be able to keep up on like, is he doing what he's supposed to be doing? Or, you know, are they getting the information? Are they learning the information that they're supposed to? And if not, what's happening to support them in that process?
Any comments, questions for any board members?
I guess I would go ahead and move the acceptance of the standards-based grading plan for this next year. Although I'd rather go slower with this change and everything, we need to move, so I moved that.
This is not on the agenda as an action item, I think it was just an informational item right now. So there's nothing to vote on, because it just says information, so.
I think we were bringing it back in the handbook, because it's a handbook thing, not a, I don't think it's a policy piece.
Additionally, this one is highlighted somewhat in that return to learn plan with academic standards as it came up in that committee as a, how are we going to communicate progress and improve in that process? So it's woven into several things that are coming your way.
Yep, thank you, yep, and it's somewhat confusing here, but with all these changes this year. But we'll get through it, so. Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll move on to the high school summer school program. Mr. Byham and Dr. Menard.
We had originally come to you with the summer school program back in February, I believe it was. And of course, some things have changed, because we're, our whole approach to learning changed for the fourth quarter. And we have some students that we need to get caught up. And yet, most of our kids did pretty well. We were really pleased with the number of kids that actually participated and met the required learning and and met the essential standards for those courses. But we need to focus a little bit more on a high school to make sure that we're in good shape for all of our kids starting the school year. And I, so Jill and Chris and Drake had been working to put together a plan for the high school summer school. I showed some of that information with you previously in the board board report last week. And we're looking at, in that report, we looked at an increase of about four thousand dollars in cost, which, when you consider the complete change of the learning approach and the online approach that had to be adopted, that's not too bad a price to pay to get to get our kids all caught up and in good shape. It may be a touch higher than that, because one of the things that we did not include was some planning time for the teachers as they're working with kids. So each teacher may go up about four hours on on their salary, which may get us up another a couple thousand dollars. But Jill and Chris, do you want to talk a little bit about how you're envisioning this?
Sure, well, first I just want to jump in and say, sorry, Chris, I'm gonna steal your thunder, but I have the date in front of me. Sorry, do you have the numbers in front of you? Do you want to do that? Um, man, I was just waiting, waiting, waiting for June second and the end to to end, and the teachers to have all their grades in so that we could pull the data to see, you know, how did we do? How many kids did we get through? How many kids, you know, still had incompletes in their classes? And at at the end of of our regular school year, at the high school level, our nine through eleventh grade students, we had seventy-three percent of them complete all their classes. And eighty-five is eighty-five or eighty-six, eighty-three, eighty-three percent of kids completed all their core. So the classes that they didn't complete were some elective classes. And, you know, we think about the ways that we counseled our students, you, you know, we want you to complete everything now. We, if you're struggling to complete things, really focus in on that core that keeps you on track for graduation. So we were really incredibly pleased with that data and how our kids did and our teachers to support the students through the closure. So that has sets the stage for how many still are left to finish up during summer school. But we just want to take a moment to celebrate that extremely hard work of our students and our our teachers and all of our staff to get them through that. All right, on that note, Chris, summer school.
On that note, so one of the things that we felt like we needed to do is we needed to make sure that we were keeping up with the core when it comes to their credits. So we're requesting that we hire two English teachers, because we have to have four years of English when it comes to credits. We need math, we need science, we felt like we needed some Spanish, and then special education. We we just genuinely feel that having the teachers involved during our summer school, one of the things that we said was during during the closure, the ultimate goal is One of the things that we said was um, during, during the closure, um, the ultimate goal is that they're getting those essential standards one way or another. Whether it's uh, and it's from our teachers. And so we're going to hold that standard. Um, students that were passing in um, were close to finishing up or partial finish or did, did not complete anything during that fourth. It basically our fourth quarter. Um, they're going to be doing the online and work that way. If there's any sort of course recovery uh, where they need to do the full course like we've done in the past, then we'll look at um, doing uh, our ad mentum pieces. And so um, that, that's a little bit of a change than what we've done in the past. But we genuinely feel that having the teachers and the support of the teachers where um, I've already talked to the teaching staff. And they're going to be meeting with the students and having them, you know, with some required pieces in order to get that credit. So we just felt that it was a, a prime opportunity to kind of close in that gap. Um, you know, I, I've talked to a lot of different schools and, and they handed, handed credits out and things like that. And we, we wanted our students to learn the information rather than giving them just the credits. And I think we've set ourselves up extremely well. Um, I heard a, a number a couple of weeks ago where um, there was fifteen to twenty percent engagement at another school and things like that. Um, to say that we were in the eighties uh, when it comes to our core, I think is uh, a testament to the great work that our staff put forward. And uh, I'm, I'm really proud of the work that our, our staff and our kids did. Um, and now it's just a matter of getting them caught up and we're, we're good to go.
Okay, so what we're really looking for is support to um, amend our high school summer school program. And um, provide some additional funding for some core teachers to uh, help us get uh, get our kids caught up before the start of the school year. For those uh, few that we have um, that need some support.
Comments from board members first.
Uh, are it, will the teachers' workloads vary drastically? I mean, there was quite the range in pay. Do some of them, will some of them be in charge of more kids than others?
Um, our summer school has um, traditionally been ran that uh, teachers are paid at their personal per diem. So those rates vary depending on um, teacher experience um, and, and where they fall on the salary schedule.
The other thing that we did is we put a couple of coordinators in um, to help manage and facilitate the load to lower the class load for the teachers. So um, Shannon Zinnell will be doing kind of what she has done in the past. Um, where she's uh, contacting students, kind of working through their schedule, getting them um, following up with grades, things like that. Um, oh, kind of the management pieces of it. Whereas the teachers are going to primarily be working with the kids and um, getting um, kind of gathering all the different um, lessons and things like that where the student needs to be. Um, but we have the facilitation piece uh, that Shannon's going to be helping with. And then uh, Sarah Madsen is our director of um, just uh, online learning. And she does a lot of different things. And so we've asked her to take care of the ad mentum piece because that's something that she knows extremely well.
And you, you feel like you have enough staff to cover your needs this summer?
I think so, yeah.
Is there any um, in the COVID-19 funding and everything, emergency funding? Is there any money available from the state to help us out with this type of program? Uh, Dr. Menard, uh, Mr. Lewis, do you guys have any ideas on that?
Mitch, does any of the safe funds fall into that or the, excuse me, the CARES funds?
Yeah, we can use um, those funds for it. It kind of directs it to um, minorities and stuff like that. Um, let me find that email I sent you, Brad.
Chris, the pay, the pay that was listed on those forms is based on the hours that all those teachers are working, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on average, I think uh, the majority of the teaching staff is about six hours or something like that a week.
Eight hours per week and then that extra week of planning to, you know, if, if uh, I'm the math teacher and I'm overseeing the math for summer school. I know the math um, continuous learning that's out there for the course I taught, but perhaps I'm not as familiar with that out there for the other courses on my team. And so giving them some additional planning time to make sure that they have access to all that they need to support the kids um, as a part of that. It comes to fifty-two hours for those core teachers and then the coordinator um, roles have some additional hours.
I'm pulling up here.
Jeremy, kind of to answer your question, it's, we're kind of sailing the ship as we're building it.
No, I understand. I just want to make sure you're covered this year. It's important for the summer.
Yeah, and I hope, I hope we are. I think, I think we have enough time there that we can, it's going to be six weeks. And then we'll have a little bit of time to get ourselves situated for what we're going to do when we come back to. I, I have a feeling that our win time is going to be pretty important this year, uh, at least for the first month or two for our, you know, our credit recovery pieces.
Particularly with elective classes. Because we're really trying to focus in on summer school on core. And we know there are kids that still have electives to complete. And some of that, you know, involves the counselors circling back with the kids to say, is this an elective that you need? That you want to make sure that you recover? You know, where do we stand in that process?
Um, for it to work for the CARES Act um, is for planning and implementing activities related, related to summer learning and supplemental after school programs. Um, low income children, children of students with disabilities, English learners, migrant students, racial ethnic minorities, homelessness and youth care, foster care. So I, I don't know how much that could use for regular.
Right, it wouldn't be all the kids, might be a few of the kids that qualify, but not all of them.
Right.
The other question I have is, this is all great for our high school kids. Um, what about our elementary kids? How much participation do we have from the elementary kids and those elementary kids falling behind? I've heard from some elementary teachers, both in Boone district and other districts that they've been concerned because the lower elementary kids, I'm like, um, I junior high school kids can get, basically get on the computer system themselves to get, get up to date and get on to ask their teachers questions on. Uh, the lower elementary kids that have to have their parents around, parents are working and it's, you know, tougher to work with those kids. And so my question for, this probably to Ms. Warner and Autumn, what, what was your participation rate, participation rates in year two school, or your, your schools? And how much proficiency do you feel that your kids had? We know we've got eighty-three percent on core for the high school. What would your, maybe Jill, you can add interest on this too. Where are we standing at the elementary level? Because I don't want to leave those elementary kids out.
We did collect engagement data there too. Um, we had our teachers at the end of the, you know, in their, their last week and their teams um, list all their students. And um, at the elementary level, it's a lot harder to kind of gauge, right? What they had to complete. Uh, but we kind of had a little rubric that the teachers used. Were they highly engaged? Were they moderately engaged? Or you saw little to no engagement from that particular student and kind of tracked that data. Um, many of the teachers, as they fill that out in their teams, they noted that um, you know, the, the data they had or that, where they saw most of the engagement was when we tried to do um, any sort of live something over the computer with, with the students. So if there was a small group, reading group, I know several teachers um, use that method or something like that. The engagement went way up for those types of activities. Um, then uh, what we put out on the continuous learning um, you know, for assignments and stuff for students to do. A lot of that, um, as we got, started going um, in, in continuous learning, we put more things out there as exit tickets or things to, for the kids to submit. For the first couple of weeks, we didn't necessarily do that. It was like, this is optional and we hope you do it, but we had no way to know if they did or not. Um, so we got a little bit better and we weren't sure that we had great data in that. Again, all that's good feedback to help us in our return to learn plan on what, you know, what are the things that our, our parents and students were most engaged with? And what are the ways that we can give feedback, track student progress and all of that? Um, but I would say most of the, we have little graphs for most of the elementary teachers. And um, they were looking at fifty to two thirds of their kids being moderately or highly engaged. But most of them noted that that um, was, that number was based more off of times where they were having some sort of face to face communication with the students. Autumn, Brad, do you want to jump in on anything there? I'm just looking at the, the graph.
I, I, you know, I think one of the big things for that too is, I mean, and I would argue that, I don't know, my high schoolers can do the online learning so well either. I think, I think it's difficult for many of us to be engaged in the same way. We were all learning this spring for sure. Um, I, I think the thing about elementary and, you know, Brad, you can agree or disagree with this is um, we don't really have a ton of constrained skills. So many of our standards kind of build and grow. And we're used to kids being in a variety of levels for that. And so we have a lot of supports in place for that. Um, we've talked with our teams, they've really narrowed in on what's essential of the essential. They've already planned that for next year. Um, going into the fall, we've also planned um, what things, you know, the majority of the kids will need when they come in. You know, for example, the preschoolers didn't get as much time with letters and sounds as they normally do and writing was a concern. So we've already kind of planned as kindergarten teachers, what they're going to do to respond to that. And because the majority of the students are going to need that level of support, I feel like the system is already ready to support them that way. Um, we have win time for that. Um, we have data driven instruction by our teachers um, that are ready to pull small groups or respond with their core um, to those needs of the student. Because all kids were not at school. And so that, you know, because of that factor, I think we're really able to engage that way. I think particularly, it was great for our kids to get that boost in the summer, but we didn't see huge jumps in that data in the past. When they did that, it was more of a maintain category. We're really going to have to dig in with data and be intentional how we do that in no matter what format we return in. And so because of that, I think, you know, systemically, that is probably the best way to respond is as a system evaluating our practices, doing the work we've done with essential standards. Doing some more work with how we're going to assess kids if it's over the computer versus how are we going to do it if they're in the classroom? Some of those things that we've learned this spring for sure. So I don't know, Brad, if you want to.
We've also talked about the importance of doing um, assessments or benchmark assessments right away in the fall. And then also doing um, testing for, or assessments for prerequisite skills before starting instruction. So if students don't have some of the prerequisite skills they need for certain essential standards, filling in those um, missing skills or standards before starting instruction on the grade level, on the standard at the grade level.
I guess to summarize, at, at that elementary and middle school level, we really feel like um, summer school wouldn't necessarily be as effective as thinking about our whole system and how we respond um, as a whole when we have the kids back um, instead of piecemeal. Um, at the high school, knowing we had more engagement um, through some of the, the requirements for credits. We can use, leverage summer school a lot more effectively, I think.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from board members? Okay, hearing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to um, uh, approve uh, the new summer school program or the modification of the summer school program.
This is Pat, my move to approve the summer modification of summer school program.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Pritchard to approve the modifications of the summer school program as presented to uh, the board. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is the E B C E um, contract, um, Dr. Menard.
This is a real contract for our um, transition employment uh, program for our high school students. We work uh, through Genesis Development and um, they have um, uh, offered uh, this in contract for next year without an increase in cost. So I'd recommend we approve that.
Okay, just a little uh, housekeeping item is Genesis uh, has that restructuring and ownership change? And they're now called Imagine the Possibilities instead of Genesis. Um, this happened this past winter. Um, there were some management issues and some financial issues such that um, it's a larger organization now. Um, but they still provide the same services here in Boone. Any other questions? Hearing none, all the guy have a motion to approve?
I'm moved to approve the contract with Imagine the Possibilities.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Nice from seconded by Mr. Pritchard, nearly simultaneously to approve the uh, Imagine the Possibilities um, contract. Any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Now the Y S S mentoring agreement, Dr. Menard.
Excuse me, each year we uh, work with Y S S and some mentoring for our uh, students at the uh, middle school and elementary level. And um, uh, we uh, we pay a minimal fee for that of $2,500 uh, and provide an office in the, in the uh, school. So um, I would recommend we approve that for, again for next school year.
Okay.
I would, I would just like to mention that they need to address the correct uh, school district in their first item.
Yes. Very good catch, uh, Ms. Nice Trump. Um, on line number one of the contract, it says this agreement is between Ames Community School District and U.S. all the services, so.
Yep.
Um, we're going to send this back to him.
Yep.
Good catch.
Thank you, Pam.
One question I had with this Y S S um, the mentoring contract, I guess, kind of wondering what exactly it entails. Um, because as we look forward, and we already discussed um, how we have one counselor at the middle school. And you know, Sue just retired and, and I know we haven't, we've replaced her, but yeah, I mean, Sue was doing a lot of stuff in those areas of emotional, mental health. Um, and so just knowing what COVID has done to the world around us. I just, I didn't know if there's any more we could get from Y S S in the areas of mentoring and mental health guidance. So yeah, just.
I was in contact with Jill Hill at Y S S uh, or at the end of last week. And at this time, they haven't um, determined to do any additional services, but we're going to have a meeting to talk about that. And she was going to get back to me because uh, it was something that I said, if we could do some partnerships, they have some um, services and, and skilled people that uh, maybe they could help us with. So we're, we're in discussion with them, but nothing uh, has taken place yet as far as any proposal or anything.
Joey, I'm a mentor for Franklin and I know that they reached out to me to see if I would like to continue to be in contact with my mentee. And so I was willing to write letters this summer and keep in touch with him a little bit, if it was okay with his mom. And it was, so she gave, now allowed them to give me her address. Um, we just got a card from Y S S asking if we would be willing to be mentors again. And we would, you know, would we consider continuing with our former student, that type of thing? So they have reached out to us, I would say at least three times with different information since we got out of school in March.
Okay, any further discussion on this topic? Hearing no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the Y S S mentoring agreement. Once the um, line one has been corrected to Boone Community Schools.
Motion to approve Y S S mentoring contract.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Weber, seconded by Ms. Dieter Neistrom to approve the Y S S uh, mentoring contract with the Boone schools. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is school lunch prices. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is school lunch prices.
Yeah, they're, the Department of Education and the USDA work, the Department of Nutrition works with USDA and. There's a formula for establishing prices and what they need to be at and. Our adult prices. Need to go up ten cents to meet that requirement. It's a, it's a minor cost adjustment for us. But it keeps us in line with requirements of the USDA. So I'd recommend we increase our. Our school lunch prices to three dollars and eighty-five cents.
That's just for the adult lunches, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the change in the adult lunch price?
I move to approve change in the school lunch price.
Is there a second? Then move, okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pritchard, seconded by Mrs. Stevens. To approve the increase in the adult lunch price to three dollars eighty-five cents. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Ah, now, board policy. Four oh three dot one, this is employee physical examination, second reading, Dr. Menard.
Yes, this is part of our work with our workman's compensation to include physicals. Pre-employment physicals for employees to ensure their health and wellbeing. And capabilities to do the job they're being hired for. This is the second reading, we recommend that this be approved.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this policy? Yeah, motion's been made by Mrs. Stevens and seconded by Dr. Nystrom to approve the second reading of the employee physical examination. Policy four oh three dot one. This, of course, is for higher REs from now on, does not affect people already employed. Any further discussion on this issue? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. Uh, next, the management teacher job description, Dr. Menard.
Yes, last month we did the support staff job descriptions and these are for the managers and, and teachers to complete our job descriptions that. Those descriptions that are not part of policy. And so I would recommend we approve these.
Question please, the last one has faded as teacher leader job description. When I opened it up, it's special ed job description.
I saw that too, Pat.
So. Um, I'm wondering if we've got the wrong one there.
Let me, let me pull it up real quick and see here.
It's those there, special ed.
All the rest match their titles, that one was not.
Yeah, I'm not finding my file. Hold on just a minute. And for some reason, my teacher file isn't here. It's probably. I'll have to look at it and correct it because probably what it is, I know, I know we did both a special education and a teacher leader job description. And I did the special ed first, then copied that and then worked out that template and I must not have changed the title.
Um, no, the job description looks like special ed as well. I, I started reading it and it does not, it looks like a teacher job description, not a. Not a teacher leader job description.
The teacher leader description is correct in the teacher file.
This talks specifically about. When I read this, it's talking about teachers are responsible for leading learning for their students. The teacher readers don't have students directly, do they?
I, I think I know the link that you're looking at, Pat. Under the managers, there's a one that says teacher leader and that one you're.
This is the job description under the agenda.
Yeah, it, it is.
Agenda, there's job descriptions for each of these jobs. They're titled, but the one for teacher leaders is the special ed teacher one, not the teacher leader one. I just think the wrong one was attached. With under that title.
Um, the one I'm opening, the teacher leader, talks about the teacher leader.
Yeah, but there's, there's a different one.
The title says classroom teacher and it should say teacher leader.
We're not seeing that one at all.
No.
I, I did. I did find that one, but the one I think she's talking about is when you first open. You get down, you get director of building and grounds, then you get director of technology job description, director of transportation job description. Food service director, then the next one says teacher leader job description. If you look, if you actually look at the top part of it, it says. Special education, teacher job description.
Look, look into the teacher file, that, that's a mistake. That was one I was working as a template. If you look under the teacher file, there's a teacher leader job description at the bottom.
Yeah, I just think the summary is wrong too on it.
Yeah.
I believe the summary is wrong. Other than that, it might be fine. The summary and the title is wrong.
The summary, the teacher leader or instructional improvement leader is an educational leader focused on curriculum, that one?
That's not what I'm reading.
Okay, you open up. The teacher file and the last one is a teacher leader job description.
That's the one I'm opening up and that is not what I am reading. Summary says teachers are responsible for leading learning for their students. Teachers develop a curriculum and lesson plans and present those lessons to their students individually or in groups. That's what I'm reading as a summary.
And that's not what I'm clicking on it.
And that's in the agenda, from the agenda, that's the link.
And that, that's what I just opened, I'm sorry. I just opened the job descriptions and went to the. Teacher job descriptions and the last one is teacher leader.
Uh, again, I'm just opening it up through the agenda. I don't have the other ones, I'm just opening it up through the agenda.
You do, you do. So I, I'm exactly what Dr. Menard is talking about. So. I went through the same thing that we got on the agenda. And so it's the tab at the very top of the Google Docs, you know, the. The first thing you go into is just the manager job descriptions, but then at the very top of that. There is a little tab that says teacher job descriptions. I think what Dr. Menard is trying to say is. The one at the very bottom of the managers, the teacher leader, that's not, that's just something he was using as a template. Like that's not an actual description. The description for the teacher leader is in that other tab.
Okay, all I was seeing is that one at the bottom, the teacher leader job description was not correct.
Yeah.
And I can delete that one right now.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, that one's gone. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, now I see the other one too, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, questions about these job descriptions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the job descriptions as presented?
I would move to approve the job descriptions as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Doctor.
Okay, it's moved by Mr. Pritchard, seconded by Mr. Weber to approve the teacher job descriptions as presented after Dr. Menard made that. One little change there. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion passes. Uh, next is the superintendent's report.
Yeah, we have a, a big weekend planned. Mission activities this weekend and coordinating with a lot of community resources and. Really, I think has a nice plan put together. And as he and I talked this afternoon, the weather looks to be about seventy-eight and sunny. So it looks like it's going to work out well for us. That's always a challenge in, in June, but. We, we have Futures graduation at noon at Futures School and that's a drive-through graduation. And then we have a regular graduation, starting at three forty-five, kids show up and then at the. Race track and they'll do a little processional through town at, starting at four fifteen with their families in their cars. And get to Gepinger Field and have graduation ceremony starting at five. Chris, any, anything you'd like to share about the role of the board and the responsibilities they'll have there?
Uh, just, it's very similar to what we've run in the past, for those of you that haven't been involved. Typically. We will have all the board members sitting on the stage. Will kind of go through, Dr. Menard will do the, the welcome, we'll go through some of the. Awards and things that are students and accolades that we need to, that we typically honor at graduation. Just a quick, a quick speech and then we will have the commencement piece that. Dr. Menard, Dr. Mel House and myself participate in, in terms of handing the diplomas. There really is another role for the rest of the, of the board. But to be present. Couple of interesting things, I, I got off the phone this evening with, just before the meeting with. The racetrack and they're really excited, they're going to send out the lap car to, to escort the. The students down Story Street. They're going to give all the families four tickets to the races this summer. So that's kind of a fun add-on that the, the racetrack has done. They've been fantastic in working with them and really excited for them to do the victory lap. Victor will be up on the. Giving the checkered flag and then K W B G will be playing pop and circumstance, different versions of pop and circumstance. As well as some memories of the students, as well as some graduation songs. That'll run from about four fifteen till five o'clock and then they're going to livestream. The graduation ceremony on K W B G also from our, from our YouTube Boone TV channel. And then afterwards, Fairway has donated a picnic, basically a. Taken, take and go, grab and go type of picnic for the seniors and their families. And the, they can grab that and, and go. Booster Club will be cooking all that, so a lot of different entities involved and it's a pretty exciting time. I know that there's been a lot of. Just anxiety with not have, not having their graduation and things like that. And I know from a lot of the other. Raccoon River Conference principals that it's a sense of relief once it's done, so. Excited that it's, looks like it's going to be a beautiful evening and we'll be able to celebrate it with our, with our seniors.
Just one correction I would make, Futures has moved their graduation from noon to one o'clock, so Futures will be at one o'clock. At Futures Alternative School, so my correcting that. You're muted, Brian.
Sorry about that. I had some dogs wanting to talk here for a minute here. Anyway, what I was going to ask is that. Are we going to meet someplace else over by the football field then beforehand, or are we just going to each wander up to the stage whenever we get there?
I think we're just going to wander up to the stage because it, it's, we're not doing a true processional into the, into the stadium. We asked that everybody's going to be seated at five o'clock and we'll get started at five o'clock.
Okay, fine. Sounds good. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for all the hard work you've done on this graduation event under some. Trying times. Dr. Menard, anything else you have to talk to us about? Up, you're muted now.
No, we have a lot of work to do on the return to learn plan and, and through June and July and. And now some equity things that we certainly need to spend some time on, so we'll have a lot to do in the next two months.
Okay, that sounds good. Anything else for the good of the order or else I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I, I wondered if there'd been any discussion or heard anything from the state on potential funding. Funding cuts next year. Has there been any rumors or anything released on what funding could look like next year for us?
We haven't heard anything about that.
I haven't heard anything.
Just curious.
Just that the state is low looking at eight percent decrease and eight percent process two million, so. That's kind of my, that's in the back of my mind.
Okay.
I do apologize for my confusion on the job description and not finding the right one, but thank you.
Well, and I apologize for putting the wrong one in the wrong place and having it there to confuse you.
I just missed that link at the top.
I could see both of them, but we didn't have any common screen to share. I was about ready to share my screen to show the difference, but. Joy got, did a good job of guiding everyone through that, appreciate that, so. Okay, if I do not hear anything else, is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pritchard and Mrs. Stevens, they want to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming on board tonight. Have a good evening.
See y'all next Saturday.
Yep.
Yep.
See you Saturday.